Under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
I want to mention that I have a bad back today. I am likely going to have to just get up and move around a little bit. So I don't want to look like a crazy person just wandering around. But at points, I may have to get up from the chair. So have the members of the board had a chance to look at the minutes from the last meeting?
Yes.
Any comments, changes? Can I have a motion then to approve those minutes?
Motion to approve the minutes.
Seconded? Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Great. I also wanted to introduce our new secretary. I neglected to do that last meeting, but I had to do it. Jennifer Fox is our new secretary. And she's going to be working in the office 12 to 3, right?
Yeah, every day.
So if you need to reach her in person, that's the best time. Okay. So for time, we have two public hearings and two workshops. And I don't know if we have anybody joining us on Zoom. It's hard for me to tell, but at least one person.
That's Tracy Paul.
Hi. So if you're here on a matter, everyone's welcome to watch. And if we're here on one of the, to listen about one of the public hearings, that gives you an opportunity to speak. But on matters that we're not holding a public hearing, we really can't have, we can't ask, we can't have you speak. But at another point, we will have public hearings and there will be an opportunity for anyone to give their comments. So the first matter we have up is Floraq, which is 677 Deep Hollow Road. And this is an applicant, application to construct a one-story addition to an existing single-family home built in 1810. The ZVA granted a 19.9-foot area variance to reduce the front setback, as well as a special permit to increase the size of this non-conforming house by approximately 7.4%. The special permit requires site plan approval from the planning board. So can I get a motion to open the public hearing? So moved?
Seconded. Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Come on out. You can explain again a little bit about your application, just in case there's anything for the public.
Oh, you've heard this before. Okay, so as you mentioned, the house is in 1810. The house is an 1810 colonial structure with some later additions. The exterior style has both colonial and Greek Revival details. Let me shorten this a bit. The Floraq family would like to expand by 389 square feet part of this house. They use the side or east-facing kitchen entrance most of the time, as that's the side of the house that the driveway is on. The service areas that they enter into have proven to be inadequate and too tight for their needs, and they're looking to expand those areas. Their current entry is only three feet deep, and we are looking to make a new entry for it, which allows a more appropriate way to circulate within the house. The house also has an old basement with rubble-stone walls and dirt floors and very low beams, as is typical for the house of that type of age. But they're not able to store anything at all in the basement of the house. To fix this problem, we are proposing a new combination mudroom and laundry off the entry with large closets that will address these storage needs. This room will also act as a holding room for their two dogs when necessary. Another feature of this design is to connect the, an existing storage building to the interior of the house, allowing us to upgrade its insulation, waterproof the floor, add a heating and air conditioning so it can be utilized as a home gym. This existing storage building is 11 and 1/2 feet square. We wanted very much to keep this structure since it is visible from both the driveway and from Deep Hollow Road. It's very picturesque structure. It's essentially a small pavilion with a little cupola and a weather vane on top, and it adds much visual interest to the overall look of the house. So connecting it to the interior of the house allows them to reuse it in a productive way and to have it be here on this way. We've also added a five-foot by seven-foot open porch at the entry, which will not only provide useful cover at the entrance, but because it only has two columns and is effectively see-through, aesthetically, we think the porch adds a layer to the facade and helps give an overall impression of the house which will be appealing. We've also taken great care with the exterior design to mimic and or match the existing materials, windows, and woodwork details of the house. And our goal is to make it look like this addition was always there. The last time we were here, I was asked to add onto the site plan an area showing the construction disturbance area. Is what this plan shows.
No, that was a good summary. Thank you. The only updates that we made to the memo was to note that that was added in, the area of disturbance, which is what we requested. And also, we did get a response back from county planning on the referral that was made at the last meeting. It's a matter of local concern, so no further action there. You already classified this as type 2 last meeting for SEAKER. So at this point, we have no further comments. Assuming the hearing can be closed, you have a draft resolution in front of you.
Anybody in the public have a comment, question?
Yep.
No? Anyone on board with any comments, questions? Okay. So if there are no further comments, can I get a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Seconded? Seconded? All in favor? Aye. Okay. So has the board, have one of the board had a chance to look at the resolution? The resolution that Joe passed around? Are you okay with that resolution?
Yes.
Okay. So can I get a motion to adopt the resolution?
So moved.
All in fa, uh, seconded? Seconded? All in favor?
Aye.
Great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. So the next is another public hearing, and this is Cape's Gemini LLC Special Permit Application. Here the applicant, Holly Hammond, on behalf of the owner seeks a special permit to own a retail business selling local dairy and produce items. Property has an 8,200 square foot area building on it, and the project will not involve any exterior construction. At our last meeting, we reviewed the submitted survey, classified the project as type 2 under SEAKER, and referred the project to the county. Hi. So can I get a motion to open the public hearing?
Motion to open the public hearing.
Seconded? Seconded? All in favor?
Aye.
Hi, Holly. I'm Holly Hammond, and my intent is to have a farm store. And I did give the square footage initially to use approximately 1,500 to get started, particularly going into the winter season. You wouldn't really need much more than the maximum if things were going well, about 3,200 square feet. And to mostly procure, yeah, procure food from the surrounding areas and have it sold there.
All right. Anything outstanding? I think we're.
Good summarize. The memo got a little bit longer because we got some more information. Thanks for responding to the emails. We communicated with the applicant offline just to get, because last meeting, the survey was presented to you. We didn't have that prior, so walked through that. And then we had some questions that were in our memo initially answered through email from the applicant. So that's really the, if you look through, it's really just acknowledging information that was provided by the applicant on square footage, hours of operation, parking, and so forth. So we did get the county response back. Again, a matter of local concern was their response. You did classify this as type 2 at the last meeting for SEAKER. I think the big question that we had was just square footage. What's the maximum we should assume? And you mentioned 1,500. I think it's a good idea to maybe go up to the 32, up to maximum number just for the special permit to provide that flexibility. And that would require about, let me say for parking? 32, maximum? That's just based on?
Yeah.
The site would accommodate that easily based on the size of the existing parking area. The, there's an apartment that's remaining. It's near the rear of the building, is that right?
Yes.
So our only question would be, is that parking going to be marked so that, you know, in case there's a lot of folks coming in, they want to park back there, that it's marked for tenant use only? It might be a good idea, just so that's marked for the tenant. I don't see people driving back there, but you never know. They'd probably park in the front.
Not want really people going in the back.
Okay. So it might be a good idea. I think one of the conditions in the resolution that we had Joe add was that that parking space be clearly marked so that no one can do that back there. Yeah, otherwise, you know, we noted that there was a survey that was submitted did show a lot of existing wetlands and buffer areas on the site, but those were, and those were recently delineated, but they're, you know, the improvements on the site are there. And, you know, some of the buildings within the buffer, there's a septic system that's been installed for prior approved use, I assume. So, and there's no new exterior construction happening, no new improvements on the site. They're going to use what they have. So in that case, I didn't think a wetlands permit was necessary for this action. So, so there's a resolution prepared. Our comments were addressed. We reviewed all the plans and just wanted to summarize in that memo for you all to see that we reviewed it, our opinions on stuff.
So any member of the public that has any comment or question about this application? Or have any further comments? Okay. So if there are no further comments, can I get a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Seconded? Seconded? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So have all the members of the board had a chance to look at the resolution that Joe sent us? And can I get a motion to adopt that resolution as rapid?
So moved.
Seconded? Seconded? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Good luck with it.
Thank you. Thank you. Can't wait to see it.
Just a note, like if something else was to come for this property in the future, another retail, you say for the rest of the square footage, obviously, it would need to go through a similar process that you just went through, and it would probably need to be looked at.
This permit doesn't cover any of that.
This permit covers 3,200 square feet of this proposed use in that space through a special permit for retail business. But if a future tenant wanted to utilize another portion, that would go through the same process, most likely.
Or they wanted to use it for some other purpose, they'd have to come for?
Yeah, depending on what it is. Yep.
Yeah, okay. A similar use might fall within this permit, correct?
Um, if the square footage is a lot, because right now, I think we have it listed as 32 up to 3,200 square feet for this particular applicant. But if something else was to come in to use a different part of the building for more square footage and a different use, I think it would still need to go through the same process, knew that to figure out parking and stuff like that, so.
Okay. Okay. The next matter is the clear subdivision, 515 Woodstock Road. And this is an application to approve a conventional subdivision of a 90-acre parcel into five lots. At our August meeting, we classified the application as unlisted under SEAKER and declared our intent to act as lead agency. We circulated a notice of intent to act as lead agency to the town board, the highway superintendent, the Dutchess county, Department of Health, and New York State DEC. We referred the application to the CAC and the town's wetland consultant, and we referred the application to county planning.
Well, I've heard a lot of people.
Jennifer, they're more than away. Well, no, it would pop up as that they're leaving. There was only like five people to add, and everyone's been added. But we're all there. Sometimes they don't, they're, they're probably still there. You don't always see everyone that's on the meeting. It's a visual screen. There were more, there were three people showing up previously. These are also the default settings for all meetings.
Hi, good evening, everyone. We have a smaller group on our side due to holiday schedules and all. But with us are Jennifer Andrew and Amy Pottnet from LRC. So missing tonight is Doug Larson and David. So, but hopefully, we can answer most questions. If not, we'll take things back. I thought I would start off with the same two slides because there were a couple of members that weren't here last time, just to kind of overview it and then tell us what we should do or what we need to answer. Okay. So again, the purpose, as you stated, was an application to subdivide a 90-acre party, parcel, excuse me, into five parcels in a residential low RL five-acre zoning area. The approach is really to use the existing boundaries that we have naturally, really look at how it fits within the neighborhood, looking at our neighbors, the sizes of their properties, and then identify setbacks and protective views and wildlife. So we did a study, and LRC will give an overview of that just on the second page. So our subdivision approach was to use the main road that bisects the property in half, to use stone walls that have been used to clear out the field. So everyone who's cleared out the field and hit a stone with a lawnmower knows, you put all the stones and eventually you get a wall. So there are several existing old, old walls that we use. We use tree lines. So because of the old farming tree lines, we have natural lines. We looked into the neighbors, five-acre plots, 15-acre plots. So we feel we're comparable in sizes that kind of fits within to the neighborhood. And then lastly, we know that one of the key features of this property that the neighbors like, we like, it's beautiful, is the main field. So after you come north on Stanford Road, you see the red barn, you make a left. And by the time you hit the dirt road, you look left and there's this big main field. And it's beautiful. Look south, it goes up to kind of the Beacon Hill. So we agree with everyone, that's, that's going to be there for, for a long time. And that's within the constraints that we've kind of set. So with that, I'll hand off to Amy to kind of give an overview of how the constraints were defined and some of the considerations we took in.
Hi, Amy, team, LRC group. Just here to give a brief overview of, you know, the same presentation we gave last time, just the key points for those who weren't able to join us. So as Tim said, we use the natural boundaries of the existing 90.87-acre parcel to create new lot lines for a five-plot subdivision. The existing farmhouse and structures will be located on parcel number three, which is a little over five acres. And then the existing grand house is located on parcel number four, which is a little over 23 acres. What we really wanted to show that the proposed lot lines was that it fits into the, fits into the surrounding neighborhood. Very similar lot sizes, you know, reflecting the smaller lot size over here. That's about 12 acres, and, you know, surrounding is 20 and up.
And the five-acre lot. So there's the five-acre lot that was done off the Bonneville residence that was at, end of 2023.
So, so in looking at splitting up the parcel, we also looked at the environmental concerns that were raised in the previous application for this project. And that's how we came up with this constraint map. We had Michael Fishman go out into a wetland designation, and we can see wetland A through R on this map, as well as this, and the agricultural areas. Shows what we propose as building envelopes for the house location, the driveway, and the blue. And those really came from studying the properties. And we did a land inventory, and we did an NRI analysis based on the town adopted NRI maps. And just an update from the last presentation, we heard back from SHPO, and we got a letter of no impact regarding any archaeological concerns or historic concerns.
So a brief overview. Is there anything else you'd like us to cover a little bit more, or?
Do you, do you guys have the letter from State Marine Map? Was that sent to them?
We just received it.
Yeah, I did send it out this morning. As soon as it came out, I thought it was.
Just like to confirm that the building envelopes are able to be placed on the survey map at this. Because at one point last week, the last time you were here, you indicated that they weren't going to be on a survey map. And then I understand, after some research, you found that you could place those on the survey map.
So we can put a note on the subdivision spot to reference the constraints map showing the, the building envelopes.
Right.
But something like this can't be filed.
No, I think that's too much information.
Yes, it's way too much, yeah.
So how do you codify the building envelopes? So in other words, what makes them permanent?
If there's a note on the plat, and that's what gets filed with the county, and that's, that serves as public notice of those.
So how do we, how do we see them defined? In other words, what map do we refer to to see them?
Well, this, this map is part of our, you know, public record of this application. So the note on the plat would refer to this. And then whoever needs to look at this would have to come and do a FOIL request or, you know, look online at those resources that we use on your website. For example, at some point, these lots went up for sale, and somebody wanted to buy them. They would need to be clearly known to them that there's a very, there's a limited building. Those are building envelopes, and that is the limited development area. How would that be shown to the public?
Again, the appropriate diligence for somebody buying a project or buying a property with that would be that they would look for that map as part of their due diligence in the acquisition process. And that's why the note being on the map would be a reference to the rest.
So the survey map refers, refers the landowner, the new owners, to that map?
Correct.
What kind of, what kind of, what kind of language is on the survey map? I mean, that's, that's important language.
Subdivision.
Subdivision map, right. I'm sorry. Right. The subdivision map. That language is important.
It's, I mean, the language can certainly be fleshed out in a way that's satisfactory to the board and the applicant to be familiar or the applicant's council to be familiar with that sort of language. But to generally answer the question, it would, just like any other line of demarcation on the map, it would clearly spell out precisely what that, whatever the key on the map was, whatever the dotted line was or hashed line was, that that's what it.
So I'm interested in terms like it would be mandatory to, to observe those building envelopes. I'm not just, don't take a look at this, and you may build there, but you may build somewhere else.
The note would reflect the condition itself. It wouldn't just be like a fair reference to, you know, it would just be like a red flag, you better work with the map. But it would actually reflect the condition itself.
Right, because my understanding is, this is going, we're doing, so we're making a trade-off between an ordinary subdivision and a cluster zoning. And in my opinion, this subdivision is much more appealing and within the town's interest to have it this way rather than clusters zoning. But the trade-off is that, that we have these building envelopes. And so it's important that they, that we codify. I'm using the word codify. We make it clear that those are, those are to be obeyed.
Yes. Do we note it, and it's certain? It would be, it would be apparent.
Okay, upheld, right.
I mean, Jennifer, do you have any, you understand that, I'm sure.
Absolutely. And we consent to that. Certainly, there's going to be something in the chain of title to indicate this. And the, I just want to clarify that the discussion last month was that a map this detailed and containing color was too much to be filed. But certainly, the subdivision plat can have a note, can describe the building envelopes, can refer to specific documents.
Right. Matter of fact, if I would refer to a simpler map than this.
Yes, yes, right. There's a lot of information.
It's too much information. It's good, it's good analysis for us, but I think it's way too much information.
To the point that someone having to do their due diligence, do it well. The note may even refer to specific data or review files, where they know what to ask for, so that someone knows they're asking for.
Thank you.
I know there was some discussion. I just wasn't sure exactly where we are on that. But in, in kind of the trade-off of not doing the cluster subdivision versus the subdivision as outlined with these contained building envelopes, what would the rest of the land that's not in the building envelope, would that be in perpetuity in conservation? Or how, how would that work for not, not just this particular time, this subdivision, but going forward?
Well, well, I think that certainly we're willing to discuss with the board what would, you know, I think we need to be very specific, but we are not proposing a conservation easement. None of the lands around this are property. These lots certainly more than need zoning, with the exception of the one that's just a bit over five acres. We had proposed the building envelopes to be the sole locations for the home. For the driveway, we showed proposed locations for entrance, how they would arrive at the home. I've mentioned this before, that certainly in large properties, people have things like burb baths, run-in sheds. Farming is allowed as a use as of right. And there would be, no, it would be more or less punitive to subject this property to controls that go way beyond what other lots are for. But certainly, the building absolutely is controlled. I think the other thing about cluster, I wouldn't quite use the word trade-off because I think the point we made last month is that the way the cluster law is worded in this town, it brings some non-benefits with it mandatorily. The lots can't be any bigger than acre. That is certainly not in keeping with what is here. Cluster allows septic and wells to be located outside the lots. It, it says houses could be up to 60 feet separated from each other. So that is not to say the cluster can't be a wonderful tool. And I think the, we've submitted a detailed open space study where we analyze each of the factors in the zoning code of evaluating them. And one of them is the size of the property and the amount of open space that could be gotten. If, if we had a parcel that was hundreds and hundreds of acres, and, and actually, the zoning law itself mentions over 100 acres as being the, the ideal size, then you could preserve a large parcel, and you would have enough lot owners to make a homeowners association work. A homeowners association with five members is, it's kind of an awkward situation. It doesn't really work. So what we're saying is the, that we're proposing something that has the benefits of a cluster in that you know where the houses are. You know they're not going to be close to the lot lines. You know that it's been evaluated how they're separated from each other by topography and, and trees. And so you, you have an idea of what the land is going to be in the future. You know that the resources are going to be protected. And, and I'm willing to work with your council on getting in writing very specific language, which will clearly state what that is, and that it would be binding in the future, absolutely binding. So binding.
The answer to your specific question, I think, whether, at least to elaborate on that, is that for a true conservation easement typically requires someone to be willing to accept that conservation easement in terms of its care, maintenance over time. I think that may be the point that Jennifer is getting to about if you have a larger homeowners association, where you have some entities that should do it. But the protections that would be described, again, would be very specific, would be tied to the land and any future owner.
I guess that was my question. It's tied to the land for any future owners. And that's where I was getting, not necessarily a specific conservation easement, which comes with a whole different group of requirements. But that it wouldn't just be for this particular subdivision today. It would be in perpetuity that these building envelopes would be followed.
And it would be a document that we would review and that you would review.
I would like to clarify something.
I have another concern that just because we're setting building envelopes, if we don't restrict further subdivision. I have another concern that, just because we're setting building envelopes, if we don't restrict further subdivision of the parcels, what does it mean 20 years down the line if someone comes in and says, well, I have this 20 acre parcel, now I'd like to divide that into two and I want another building envelope?
Yeah, I think you could do that.
I think.
You can restrict further subdivision.
That's what I'm suggesting is that in order to get the benefits of a conservation easement without having to go through that whole process, if we had these parcels and they remained like this, we're getting all the benefit of that, because no one's going to be developing. All they're going to be doing is putting a run-in shed or some, you know.
So, so deed restrictions or is that, that how you handle that?
You could put it in ten years, yeah.
That can be done as a deed restriction. Because in 10 years, there, whoever owns the land is allowed in 10 years to come forward and ask for a future subdivision.
Well, unless you make it a condition.
But right now, but right now, that is what.
Right, under ordinary circumstances, that would be true.
I think we get the benefits of the conservation easement, we get what we're looking at here as for the future. And, you know, the easiest way to do that is to have it not be further subdivided. And I think it creates large estate quality lots that people are willing to pay.
So how do you feel about that?
It kind of goes against the zoning that is set up and established as law, which is five acres.
Yep.
You go across the road, it's 10 acres.
Yeah.
Why is it different? If you look through that entire area of going down between the mailman's, even the coxswains, they have 15 acres. These are large estates, they're all in five acre zoning. So when was the zoning code set? What was the idea that the town had to actually create five acre zoning? Were there plots versus why not make it 20 acre zoning when it was done in the code? So it, it does devalue the opportunity. So, you know, if someone comes in and says, oh, you know, I don't want it now, but I have three kids, maybe I'll build houses for my three kids, can't do that now. So you, you are limiting a short view of the owner. So your real estate value of this, it is protective in terms of I'm going to have a neighbor next door who has 10, 15 acres. He's not going to do anything for the next 10 years. But if his kids come along, maybe they split the property into a seven acre, seven acre, just like everything else. You know, given that, I, I don't think you can make the 13 properties, 14 properties that are allowed under the zoning code.
Yeah.
We actually have a, there's a, we could do it. I mean, it flagsticks and everything, but this is what we think is appropriate now. You know, if, if in 10 years, five years, what happens to Valley Farm Road where there are quarter acre properties going all the way up to the hill? Maybe they start to run down the other hill. Look at 343, everything's south. People need housing, people want areas, the town needs people to come in to actually contribute. If you're now saying the only thing available are 25 acre properties, it might limit what the town does.
Yeah.
So I mean, one generation, I think it's fine, 10, 15 years, completely.
Yeah. Once you subdivide, it's 10 year limit until you can ask to subdivide again.
It's, 10 years is for minor subdivisions. And this qualifies as minor because it's five lots.
Yeah, it's not a minor subdivision. Not a minor.
No.
Uh, sorry, this is the conventional, right.
Minors.
Minors have the 10 year.
So we don't have a 10 year.
No, the minor, sorry, the minor.
I'm fine with a 10, 15 year.
Yeah.
You know, I'm looking at like that next generation, whereas, you know, the often plus family who originally had this, they had, they come from the publishing industry, they were big patrons of the town, they donated all the time. I can't maintain such a large property. It makes more sense to maintain a smaller piece and then split it up and hopefully neighbors come in. And then 10, 15 years down the line, they might do the same thing. Global warming keeps coming, we're all underwater anyway, so.
Not this one.
Let's not get real.
Right, so if environmental changes come, I mean, you look at, you know, the neighbor's property, which is all grass and field, this property is actually woodland because we like the nature so much. We, we think that this is a nice kind of breakup of it right now, but in 15 years, I don't know what people want.
Well, I think the more the concern of the communities and, and for the board and looking at for everyone's best interests is that the plan, it seems like a good fit. I like the idea of the building envelopes. But if you then, it's subdivided and then you start selling the, the pieces, you know, the other parts of the land and then you keep your, your piece and you sell those out, that any bear will have the owner of that new piece of land coming in here and wanting to divide it into two or three more parcels.
Right.
And then that kind of defeats the whole point of going through this exercise of protecting the views, protecting the wetlands and the, and the, all the things that come along with that. So that's, that's the concern. I think there's been a lot of thought and good planning going into this. The concern is that once those properties then start being sold off in the next year or however long it takes to sell them, where, where are we sitting in one year from now? And that's, that's the, not that we're all underwater in 100 years or 200 years, but what happens next year and in the next five to 10 years, you know, once those properties are sold.
At the same point, they do have to reapply for it. And at that point, you could say no.
Property owners have a right to subdivide the property.
No, they don't.
They don't.
Based on what we're doing.
No, that's not the thing.
You, you can apply.
You can apply, we are the ones that get to decide whether they have, they have a right to apply and they have a right to do certain things with their land. But it is permission granted to do these things, so it's not a right.
The town has the rights.
So, you know, they, if they're in a certain zone, that's as much as they could do, a five acre zone, that's the max that they could do, it was five acre. But we get to decide what the parameters are on now, that's what the planning board. You have this parcel that's 23 acres, for example, and there's one building envelope on it right now. And that, somebody buys it from you and they could put three or four homes on it because there are no other, there are wetlands or any other reason to.
But you can only have one home, the parcel.
Right, but if they come to us and here, and subdivide it.
But a further subdivision.
But you would have to approve that.
But that's always true.
Yeah.
Right, so what I'm saying is, what, so, so what there, what, what is being discussed here is a more significant condition that limits the discretion to grant, to even seek that subdivision, that further subdivision.
I have a different question, pause on this for a second, because I wasn't here last week, I did watch the video. Is the, do the building envelopes, a few questions, do the building envelopes include septic and well?
The building envelopes, as per discussion, were buildings only because we don't know where well or septic can be placed.
Okay.
Because there, there's no building proposed here.
Okay, and then.
And, and if I could just add, everyone would want their septic system and their well to be as close to the house as possible because all the piping costs an awful lot of money. But keeping in mind, but even in a cluster subdivision, the septic and the well could be located in the open space. The idea here was that we would know where the homes would be, where the driveways would be located, so that everyone knows if my neighbor buys this other lot, this is where his house will be. And while there is some devaluation, you might say, I think other people could say you're adding a certain amount of certainty and exclusivity that, that adds to value and none of us is an appraiser, so I'm not, I'm not venturing any opinion here. So, anyway.
No, that, that's, that's helpful, I just didn't want to answer. And then are, are the building envelopes, I guess, were those, and I don't know who to direct this question to, but were those developed with further subdivision in mind? So you referred to, there is a map, lots and lots of flags, is it?
So those were developed just based off of the, the environmental constraints, steep slopes, wetlands, you know, all of them are outside of the buffers of the wetlands and they're, they're trying to stay away from the steep slopes and the agricultural soil. So if the question is, you know, can you further subdivide, I would say probably not based on like, what are you going to do with the property that you subdivided? If there's so many restrictions, you can't put another house. These are the best areas.
The wetlands make it very difficult, they have building lots. Yeah.
But in that way, then, to come back to the restriction, in that way, telling you now that there's no further subdivision is helpful because otherwise you sell somebody a 15 acre lot or whatever it is and they just assume they're going to be able to further subdivision. There was no restriction on the land, they, they're going to come to us and be angry that, well, what do you mean it can't be subdivided? I can't, I can't believe I, I bought something that couldn't be.
They're not angry at me.
Oh, they are angry.
I would say, I don't have the right.
You're real, you told them that they can subdivide.
Well, that's someone else.
They'll be pretty angry.
They'll be angry. Whereas this creates certainty at this point in time when we're doing all of this analysis, that's what I like about that. So I'm, I'm pretty sure that the red lines on here are the buffer.
Yeah.
Right, this is the buffer for the wetlands, the red lines?
Uh, should be.
I think that's what the map, I can't read it. Yeah, they're, they're, yeah, they're, yeah. But if you look at this, I mean, there's just the, the 90, or whatever the entirety of it is very much covered in.
Yes.
In wetland and then you add the buffer area to it. They're very, I, I just don't see how you could further.
So the, the only area potentially you could look at is the southeast corner.
Yep.
Off of Stanford Road, where the neighbors on the south have a similar structure on that same plateau. You could split that lower one into one, two parcels that would still be within the five acre zone.
Right off of Stanford Road.
Yeah, now, I, we chose not to locate there because I think steep slopes are a little bit much for a driveway. So it's, it's a downward pitch and then all the salt off Stanford Road would just flow into your, into your house. Growing up in a downhill house, having to shovel snow uphill for many years, it's, it's easier the other direction.
Given the constraints that I think everybody is really acknowledging here, the difficulty with going forward without such a condition is, is kind of standing yourself, which is that the next owner potentially comes in and says, and, and uses the fact that they've been deprived of the use of their property, even though it beats zoning, so to speak, because of regulatory conditions that constrain them and they make arguments about how that's, you know, an unfair restriction of property rights. It's just, pardon my pun, but it creates a slippery slope for the next planning board that's got to review that potential subdivision. And again, given that I think we all acknowledge what the constraints, the natural constraints are in any event, it seems most prudent, I think, to, to include it as a condition. So that at least it's an expression of clear intent when anyone looks back at a previous approval, that future planning board or, or future applicant. It can't be claimed that.
That's why I'm okay with a 10 or 15 year stay of subdivision, but going out 15, 20 years, I mean, Orbis, I'm surrounded by commercial and Ors Harms, what if all of a sudden Orbis sells out? And then they start doing subdivisions down there and then you have this, someone says, oh, well, we just continue and expand it up.
Well, that is what the planning board is, I mean, then that'll be that problem when it comes up. And then maybe subdue to the same discussion, but I think that is precisely, frankly, what is that future consideration that the planning board is trying to. Why would it's, the planning board's concerns about the environment here be any less in 15 years than they are today?
That might even be more stringent.
Yeah. Could I just ask for clarification on the requirement for disclosure? How would this be, you keep it, you're aware of it, if you sell it, I just want to understand what is the requirement?
I don't know.
Yeah, I think.
I, I mean, I, my intent is to share all of this information.
I understand, I understand, I'm not saying that you do have some response, but I just want to understand what the requirement would be so that a buyer.
But your intention is to sell this because you'd like to offload all the land that's too much land.
Correct.
Right.
So what is, how would this be? I heard some back and forth in terms of what would it?
It could be placed in the, in the, in the chain of titles so that anyone doing a, as we, while it's public purchase property, you get title report, that they go to the county, they look for the filed map, they look for the deed, et cetera, they see what restrictions apply at this note, as we've been discussing, would show up on that referring to a specific planning board resolution and, you know, any, any, it's a, that's what they're doing. He's going to look at that resolution and advise their potential buyer, this is something you need to be aware of.
So this would be plain, prominent, fully. And upon the sale, you're, you have no further liability involved.
I'm going to be a neighbor, so I have certain liability of proximity.
You'll have your proximity, but you won't have any.
You know, in the neighborhood down at the coffee shop, someone taps you on the shoulder.
We did issue a follow-up memo, it's mostly acknowledging the applicant's noting of our previous comments. It's really only one new thing that I'll talk about. But first I wanted to scroll through the referrals that we made and the responses that came in. I think it's important just to touch on some of that. So there was a referral made to the county under truth 39 N for subdivisions. They responded with a no authority response, which is what we anticipated they would be because they don't really have authority to review subdivisions, they don't have a variance. That's the position that Dutchess County Planning has taken. They did a similar no authority letter on the previous iteration of this application too. So that came back. We also referred to Steve Marino, the wetlands consultant for the town. He did issue comments today, he was out at the site last week. Also, he did a site visit and inspected most of the wetland delineation and habitat issues out there. He's qualified to address both of those issues. And I'll get to, he, he's in agreement with one of our comments specifically about the bog turtle and I'll, I'll get to that in a moment, but I'll keep going on the referrals. The CAC referral was made and there were some draft comments presented. They're meeting tomorrow, so those comments aren't finalized yet, but there was a comment about the wanting to have the building envelopes show specific driveways, septic and other possible land disturbances. They wanted to have the land outside of the, of the envelopes be held through a conservation easement. Those are the two main comments that came in from the CAC, which I understand they're meeting tomorrow and then there should be a final recommendation before the next meeting. We talked about conservation easement and how, you know, what the applicant's proposing to do and what the planning board seems to be comfortable with in lieu of that. So it seems like we discussed that. On Seeker, we made referrals to the town board based on the scenic road designation of Woodstock. We didn't hear anything back from them yet, but 30 days hasn't elapsed since the last meeting, so we should, maybe we'll hear something. But technically, right now, we're still within that 30 day window. So there's a couple of agencies that haven't responded. If they don't respond within 30 days, you're free to move forward with Seeker as a lead agency, but I think we should wait until that 30 days has elapsed and it hasn't yet. So you can't really, tonight, we don't recommend that you declare a lead agency yet. That could happen probably at the next meeting. The highway superintendent was also provided with the application, they have no objections to the planning board being lead. They did provide comment that any new proposed driveways that would be approved by the planning board should first be clearly marked and inspected by the highway department for drainage and site distance. I don't know if the applicant had, had any thoughts on that, but I, I feel like, you know, right now we're showing potential driveway locations, those would all be subject to permitting when building permits are proposed, the highway department would be involved in that as well. So I think that there's another layer of review involved in driveways.
That's a pretty standard.
Yeah, it's a pretty standard comment, no issues on your part?
Yeah.
Okay. Health departments, we just noted that in our first memo that the permission to file would be necessary. They did respond with a comment letter, just no objections to lead agency status. Um, they did respond with a comment letter, just no objection to lead agency status. Um, noting that it doesn't meet the definition of a realty subdivision. Um, they did note the condition on lot four, proposed lot four. Um, quote, they said, uh, the subdivision of the section south of Woodstock Road shall be contingent upon the ability for the approved primary and reserve onsite wastewater treatment system and well, if it is existing ranch house, be located on the same parcel. And I think that's already proposed.
Yes.
Um, and that's this parcel here where there's an existing ranch house. It's been there for a while. It's noted that, yeah, it's in the wetland buffer, but it's an existing house that I think the proposal is to, it would be refurbished or renovated as part of this, or it's already there.
There's no.
It's going to be sold as is. Okay. And it already has a well and septic on it, so that's.
And a field south, yeah.
Okay. Okay. Um, and then again, you know, any future buyer of these lots would deal with the county for septic and well installations. And that's all, that's where the more detailed soil perk testing is necessary. So there's a chance that while they show these envelopes and they want to have everything contained in them, there's a chance that maybe they do need to have something outside. But again, once, you know, a septic tank or a field is put in, it's usually restored above it to.
And it wouldn't damage the views or any of the enjoyment of the neighbors?
It wouldn't, no. And it would be subject to the county standards and, and all that, so.
You would hope that it's separate.
Right. But none of these things, the well, the well, the septic, none of that should be really initially as long as it's in compliance.
So I have a question for the council. Can we, um, ask, um, the applicant to place deed restrictions for a period of time, say 10 years, as opposed to, you know, perpetual deed restrictions?
You can write a deed restriction to say anything the planning agreed to.
Right. And so it would be more like a minor subdivision, a 10 year restriction. And the applicant seems to be okay with 10 year restriction. And I think that that would may satisfy a lot of people concerned that next year that someone buys a lot, 20 acre lot wants to split it out, that would prohibit that and that may solve that issue.
The specific nature of the condition is a matter of the planning board's discretion. So it's something you folks can discuss.
And then, yeah, and that 10 year is right now in your code for only minor subdivisions. And this wouldn't meet that, this conventional by definition, and the conventional subdivisions by definition don't have this 10 year restriction on them in your code currently. Almost done. Uh, we also, D E C, um, we sent to D E C for Seeker. We don't have a response, similar to the town board. We didn't get a response, but that 30 days is still in play. So we'll see if anything comes in. Um. Okay. And then as far as the comment, a new comment that we wanted to make clear was, uh, specific to the bog turtle and the finding of the bog turtle that was in the the habitat assessment report. And I think Steve Marino's memo echoed our comments. Um, the last meeting, we discussed a few wetlands that the applicant's consultant identified as potential habitat for bog turtles. And when that's the case, there's usually a 300 foot buffer, also known as a conservation zone for those particular wetlands. Um, what wasn't done as part of that habitat investigation was an actual, like by the book, phase one or, or if necessary, phase two bog turtle survey. So our recommendation is that that can be completed for those three wetlands. Steve Marino's memo just cites, I think, two of them rather than the third because the third is so far away from any proposed building envelopes that might not be necessary.
So the difference is, what they did was they went out and they looked, is this the environment the bog turtles might live in?
Yes.
And said, oh, yeah, maybe.
Maybe.
But now we're going to say, please go out there and count.
If they can confirm that there's actually a population there, the 300 foot buffer would be appropriate. If it's not found, if there's not a population found to be there, this town standard buffers that you have right now for wetlands should be fine. That's basically.
Different than the requirement for the bats? There, there's no requirement to identify an actual bat?
That's right. I mean, with the bats, it's the mitigation that's common is just to cut trees in the winter hibernation period. Or restrict, yeah, sorry. There's a window that you, uh.
Only cut trees in winter.
Right. The winter hibernation period when they're not in trees, when they're in caves, right? There's, in the summer months, they're roosting in trees, so you're prohibited from cutting trees down. And that's a pretty standard restriction in the D E C.
Which, which is the area that would have the 300 foot buffer? Which lot?
Yeah, it's, um.
Based on.
E, F, lot, lot one? E, F and J, I think.
You would lose the building.
You would, alright, so if, if the 300 foot buffer were to take place, you wouldn't need a deed restriction. You couldn't subdivide the property.
Uh, you could subdivide the property, you couldn't build it.
You couldn't build anything, so.
So it's E, H and J. Those are the three wetlands. Do you have them labeled on there?
No, no. That's for Steve for you. Here, J right here.
So I think it's more H and J is concerned. Steve Marino is concerned. Uh, asking that they definitely be done for those two, done as to, yeah.
Because there's no building.
There's already a house on the lot, can't build another one. Um, there's no building and building defined.
Yeah, but as, you know, as a swap out, if we want to put a 300 foot buffer on that one, sure, because it's not near anywhere. It's near the wetlands. But I, I'm, yeah, a little suspect.
I just want to comment on, somebody on Zoom has their hand raised, but this is not a public hearing. So we don't take public comment on this application. There will be public hearing in the future. And at that point, you can, uh, say whatever it is you'd like.
So that was in our memo about the phase one bog turtle habitat inventory and possible phase two survey. Um, Steve Marino echoed it. I think, you know, the applicant has had a chance to digest that a couple of days. I don't know what their answer is on it, but that's what we're recommending to nail down, uh, you know, the buffers for a couple of wetlands there.
What, about the wetlands, what you're recommending?
Oh, we're recommending for the, those that were identified as having the potential habitat characteristics of bog turtle habitat.
E, H, J.
Yes.
E, H, J or just?
Um, Steve Marino's memo, we should go with what Steve narrowed it down to. I think it was two of them that he said. Hold on.
H and J.
Just came in today. Yeah.
Just for H and J.
Yeah, he thinks that it's not necessary for E because it's distance from the development envelopes and any potential site disturbance. So H and J would be those that we would ask for that to be done on.
Okay.
And I think Steve Marino's memo said that he did not, he believed that the phase one would be sufficient.
Yes. So considering the low density of the development proposal, it's unlikely, in my opinion, that a phase two presence, absence survey will be necessary.
We haven't had a chance to discuss this with our wetland consultant yet, but we expect to do so within the next few days. And, um, I would like to ask permission of the board that our consultant could speak to the town consultants uh, to see what they, if there's any question of working out the, the, uh, protocols for the studies, et cetera.
We're okay with that. Does that make sense to you?
Okay, thank you.
I just have a question in general. Say someone came to us, um, with a subdivision proposal and, um, the lot, the lots they were proposing, we're not proposing, were not buildable.
What address is that? You shouldn't subdivide into non-buildable parcels.
But so that's our, that's our feeling, right? That we would not allow a subdivision to non-buildable parcels, right?
This has come out many, 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 many times, um, when people come to the board to subdivide is they have to generally show that what they're proposing, the parcel be parceled into is that each parcel that is then is new and existing has to be a buildable lot.
Right.
Um, and they have to kind of show that, I mean, not to extent of like doing soil samplings or anything like that, but they have to show that there's a potential for building on the new parcel.
Because if there were these 300 foot buffers, it would preclude, preclude any further subdivision on some of these lots. And, you know, some, that's.
Yeah.
It's really parcel one, I think that's going to be the most.
One on Stanford Road.
This one.
Oh, that one, okay.
Yeah. Um, because this one is one of the, one of the potential habitats.
One right on the road, right?
Yeah, so that's, you know, that's already going to create some limitations there. But in the applicant's, the applicant's consultant also has been pushing back a little bit on the, on this particular wetland here because it's of a steep topography that's around it. Um, and it's unlikely that it could have a population of turtles because they usually like to connect, have connected wetlands ecosystem. Um, and they can't really traverse steep slopes. So, but again, this is all, we'll see what they come back with. Um, Steve can be consulted on it. He's, he has this expertise as well, so. And we have folks in our office that are natural resource experts as well, so we can coordinate, but, um, you know, it might be just.
So we're going to get on this.
Yep. That's really the only new ask that we have in the memo. Um, otherwise I think we discussed, or we have a recommendation that technically you're supposed to have a public hearing on the issue of the cluster or non-cluster decision. Um, so technically you have to have two public hearings, one about that issue and second on the subdivision itself, once you get through that step. So I think our, our first recommendation is to have, um, that scheduled.
I think we're ready for that.
Yeah, that first public hearing that talks just on the issue of a cluster plan preference.
Let's schedule that, yeah.
Um.
Because if we don't, if, if we, if there's more that we don't know about or are anticipating, it should be good to do that before we get into hashing out all the other, other pieces. So let's get that scheduled right away. Let's, I mean, next month.
Yeah, I agree.
Just for that issue. Okay, why don't we do that right now? Make a motion to someone, so we can schedule that for October 1st. And this is for the cluster subdivision.
Yeah, just make that quick.
For the choice of whether this public hearing limited to the issue of whether we would choose the cluster subdivision option or this proposal.
Alright. Let me know this will reflect that.
Or a conventional subdivision.
Or a conventional subdivision.
It's not committing you to approve anything yet of this, yeah.
So Nicole, um, seconded? All in favor? Okay, okay.
And just to clarify, I think that's a discretionary decision as to whether to have it or not, but we certainly have no objection to it and think that it's very helpful.
I think it's a good idea.
To have that here.
It is an issue in and of itself that I think we would think that, just discussing with that one issue.
Yes, let everyone be heard, actually.
Yeah, there we go.
Yes.
Concerns from the community.
The conventional versus the cluster is also a, as a term that the public might have some interest in and, uh, that needs some understanding of, that sort of explains.
I just wanted to mention, we did receive two letters. I don't know if you've seen them yet, two letters from community members just this afternoon.
Oh.
But they'll, if you haven't gotten them yet, you will.
I'll forward them. I got them, I was traveling, so.
Oh, okay. It's in my car. So, um, they came late this afternoon, so. Okay.
October 1st.
October 1st, I think, so next meeting, right?
I'm going to forward them.
Is that?
So do we have anything else on this?
No, I think we'll, we'll wait to see if we get any other responses on the referrals you made last time. You should be able to be in position to declare yourself lead agency officially to next meeting for Seeker. Um, yeah, the public hearing is good to set now.
And then hopefully we'll have some more information too, when our water experts talk to your water experts and.
Sure, if we, yeah, if we have a meeting with your, well, the, the natural resources experts, I would say. The habitat, wetlands, all those issues.
Right, and that may even bring in engineers if there's questions about, uh, what's inside the envelope, what's outside the envelope, what the habitat would have. So I think we could get, make some advancement on the technical side with the technical consultants.
Great.
Thank you.
See you next month. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Can I ask you?
And did you have any other questions since you weren't here last night?
I didn't, and I, I, the materials have been very thorough and I, and I did watch the presentation. But thank you for, um, for offering.
Okay.
You're an expert more than me. I remember going to a training session on bog turtles and they said if you are bog turtle, they wouldn't tell anybody, the public would find out where they are.
That shouldn't.
Kind of illegal.
You can't really show you where they are, but you can, you can say that we discovered them, but you can't like say where.
Right.
Yeah.
Because they're trying to protect them.
Yeah, I remember that, sort of like it.
I know, it's a.
Right, so that, that's why the biologist goes in and makes the determination versus.
This is the conundrum. If he says it's bog turtle, then people go, they're there.
It's the same with archaeology. I think we have, yeah, we have to wait.
This is just a quick question.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So we next have a workshop on the Sephary lot line application. I'm not even trying to summarize it because I don't.
Yeah.
My favorite map of all time.
It's so simple.
Yeah, it's so simple, yes, not simple at all.
Yeah, I think we've, I think we've dealt with that.
A little Joe has given his opinion.
Hi.
Hi, don't worry.
Good, good. I can run you through it.
Yeah, let's do the generals.
I did some things. I did, I tried to simplify.
You don't have the original map?
Got a major pretty one. Now, this is my current map.
Arts and crafts at its best. So, um, this is a series of proposed lot line changes for the property that Mr. Sephary owns uh, out on County House Road and Maple Hill Drive. Let's just take them one by one here. We're going to start simple here. The first one was, um, this is the Swart property, who is next door, who are in the back of the.
Right here.
And their driveway is built, um, to a portion of lot number two. So what they're simply trying to do is, I think, the existing line is actually curved. What they're looking to do is the Swarts would pay to lot number two, this area here in purple, and this blue area here would come from Mr. Sephary to the Swarts that would put their driveway back on their.
And they, they would match.
Straighten the line.
Yeah. A lot of that is just kind of make the map match what's actually going on.
Exactly.
I mean, how, how properties being used.
Yeah, the argument, interestingly, is that it's making the, it's making the prior non-conformity actually more conforming by, by making it true to the, to the on the ground.
Right, yeah.
So the idea out here, this will actually be an equal area swap. So there will be no change of acreage to lot two for the Swarts. In here.
Any, there, any structures that are there, setbacks, or anything?
We're going, we are going to have to provide locations of houses. We're, we're going to do some surveying up here. So the next map will clear up all those issues. Okay, so that's number one. Um, number two, lot number seven. Now, this is, this is where it gets much, where my finger is right here, half blue, half purple, that is the current entrance into lot number seven. Okay?
I'm sorry, what do you mean?
The solid blue and the solid, uh, magenta.
Oh, that together.
That, right, is the, and this triangle is all part of lot number seven.
So it's an existing black lot.
Yep, yes, it is. What they're looking to do is this yellow here is currently.
Change the pool.
But, right, so lot three, the driveway coming all the way up to here and down and around. And what we're proposing on doing is this makes more sense coming into this lot here. It's less driveway to build. Lot number three is going to pick up the full blue and the full magenta here. That will be merged into this piece along with this little triangle here. That is all lot seven land coming in to parcel number three.
And do these have homes on them?
No, everybody is vacant.
So it's not like somebody would be, and you own all this land?
Yes, they do.
It's not like there are other people living here that would.
There would be a separate driveway for this lot, sir.
Goes right on the well.
There isn't.
Frontage on the road.
There's frontage on the road. There is currently an easement for lot seven and lot eight. We're going to use one entrance.
So now it would have to be three.
It's three and eight.
Right.
Right. And that'll be duly noted when we get the actual survey.
So all three of these lots will use this driveway entrance?
No, lot number, lot number nine is the only one. This does have a house. This one here has a house on.
Here's, here's some more color.
I think you got one up.
This will show you the house.
That's the location. That's the location of the house, the lot nine house. The reason for, we're jumping the gun a little bit. The, the reason why lot number nine is getting this yellow section because the driveway for lot number nine falls into this area here. So we're going to clean that up at this time.
So you're really reconfiguring almost all the lots?
Yeah, we're, we're, the entrance ways into them, we are reconfiguring. The lots themselves, the buildable areas, they're not changed.
And you're not making more lots?
No.
No, no.
We're moving this one so we can include this parking lot.
Oh, this would be a very simple situation, which would already.
So Brian, did you do this thirty years ago and you just messed it up? Just trying to pick your ass up.
The Harry Belig.
Well, I was in college at the time that this was done.
So is this a Harry Belig?
Jason did this.
Oh, Jason did it.
Didn't improve on the map, I'll tell you. This one really.
So just for the record, the, again, the legal consideration here is that it is an existing prior non-conformity. Again, the result of these changes does not increase that non-conformity. That's where you can get into trouble because of the things they are not proposing to do. It really is just, again, conforming to conditions on the ground. Regular lives in the action.
And that's okay, even if these flag lots, even if rules about flag lots have changed, we don't have to conform to the new rules. Because they're already existing.
If they were trying to build something new or use flag lots or something, those lines, they would be increasing that prior.
So how do you proceed from here? How do you, what's next?
We're going to come back and we're, because there are questions as far as setbacks to buildings. We're going to show where this parking area is, how much, we got to make sure, there's a fence out here too. We got to deal with.
Make sure you got thirty feet.
Right, so when we come back in and we resubmit, we're going to have the locations of the buildings on these lots. It's just going to clear all the issues up. It'll show the driveway of the Swarts property. We'll locate the house so we don't have any setback issues. We can demonstrate that to the board that whatever it is, we're not going to be making it less conform.
That's what comment number ten is asking for on that one. Just showing the structures, any existing structures out there, setbacks, that they're complying with.
Yeah, this is, could be within a couple of feet. What you see there. He's going to, he'll put it up.
We weren't sure if this was actually like ready to go or if you still had some sort of ideas.
We wanted to come back in because.
You guys are on board.
Of the attorney now. We're not increasing any of the non-conformities and we needed to have some good feeling that we can move forward.
Yeah.
So hence, that's why we took the extra step of the sketch.
Thank you.
Are we going to view this as simple lot line adjustments? Or are we viewing this as a new subdivision?
No, 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 no. No lots being created, okay. We're just swapping, we're swapping entrance ways.
It's a multiple lot line.
Very good.
Yes.
So as long as we come back, we see the map, respond to Aaron's comments, I think.
Could be in a position to have a resolution prepared for next meeting if you want to weigh in the public hearing, which you've done before.
Right.
For just simple lot line adjustments.
It's a.
It's making it better.
It's a, yeah, it's a lot line adjustment for multiple lines. You've done this before.
And I think it's always good when the map, the idea matches what's actually going on on the ground. That always makes more sense. And I think any actions to do that are in favor, it's in the favor of the community.
Right. Yeah, well, there's, there'll be less disturbance going on out there because of this than it would be. Some of the driveways will be shorter, that's really the main thing. It's going to make, the disturbance will be less.
We had some comments, but a lot of what you just presented cleared a lot of things up for us. We were, there was some discrepancy between the way it was described in the application versus your nice colored map here. So I think, like, that's, you know, comment four, for example, five. So a lot of these can be thrown out, I think, at this point. We did ask for the Swarts to provide the owner's endorsement, which came in today. Yeah. Yep, so that's fine.
I have copies of the deed too, which you probably didn't have, so I will drop those off.
Great. Otherwise, it's a, could be a type two action for Seeker, minor lot line adjustments, even though there's several of them, still fits within that. Doesn't need referral, because again, Duchess County doesn't review these types of applications unless there's a variance necessary. So they would, if you submitted it, you would get a no authority response. So there's really no point in submitting it. Yeah, and then the, you know, when the plat's ready, it just has to have the appropriate signatures and all that stuff. So I think that's really it.
Want to type it tonight? Or we could do this?
Yeah, you could type two it tonight, I think, for Seeker.
Yeah. Okay, so can I get a motion to press quiet, type two?
So moved.
Seconded? Second? All in favor? All right. Thank you.
You feel like you wanted to, when you resubmit, would you go through our memo and just know answers to some of the questions? So it clarifies things, that would help, just for the record?
Yeah.
Perfect.
I mean, we have a resolution for the next meeting?
Yes. Because we have an application going here, do I still have to be in two weeks? October 1st is coming, boy.
Decision of the board, really.
That's a question.
About the deadline. Deadline for the next meeting.
Right, two weeks, right, two weeks before.
When do you think, when do you think is realistic?
Two weeks is possible, because there's.
In reviewing it? Yeah. If you're willing to adjust the deadline specifically for this applicant, you can do that.
You worried about getting, getting surveyed now?
Well, we're, we're close on time already.
Well, the application's already in, right?
As a sketch plan, yeah, drawing. So the next submission will be the actual survey with the, you know, the official plat.
I mean, you do, you do it.
It's just a lot line, I would be willing to do it, you know, a week before the deadline. If it works for you, I'd like to do that.
I don't see a doubt. When is the deadline again?
September fifteen or so.
September seventeenth is the deadline for October 1st. So you're saying if we were to get it the week of the twenty-third? Yeah, so I think we can quickly write another memo, just addressing things that were.
Okay.
Taken care of, so.
And if you get it in earlier?
Yeah, I'll shoot for the real one, but probably going to need a couple of days.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you for that.
I think that's it.
Okay. Very good. We'll see you next month.
Thank you all, appreciate it.
Thanks, everybody. Hi, everybody, thanks. Can I get a motion to close the meeting?
Motion to close the meeting.
Seconded. The left side says something. All in favor?
Thanks again.
Every meeting is designated a motion.
Okay, now we'll do that.